Everyone, welcome. Oh, that was redundant. Welcome to the August Koneohe Neighborhood Board Meeting, starting at 6:30. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name is Mo Radke. I'm the Chair of the Neighborhood Board. First order of business is to fill vacancies on the board. And we have a seventeen-member board, and having all of the spots filled makes us a lot more vibrant and the ability to discuss things and pass resolutions is pretty important. So we have openings in Sub District Two, Seven, Eight, and Eleven. Is there anyone here that is interested in serving on the board from any of those sub-districts? And if you're not sure which ones those are, you can check in with Spencer. Okay, not hearing any. Spencer, are you seeing any? All right, moving on to our next order of business, which is city-state and monthly reports. Is there a representative from the Honolulu Fire Department here?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes, yes. I'm Captain Andy Dewey, Koneohe Fire Station, Honolulu Fire Department. I have some statistics for the month of July. There were three nuisance fires. Nuisance fires include rubbish fires outside a structure vehicle, five, six activated alarms, one hundred forty-one medical alarms, one motor vehicle collision involving a pedestrian, seven motor vehicle crashes collisions, one mountain rescue, and two hazmat incidents. Safety tip and announcements help ensure the safety of our esteemed elders. Implementing prevention and preparedness practices will promote independence and reduce frequency of injury or death from home fire and falls. Learn more about it at fire.onolu.gov/fire and lifesafety/capuna. Stay in the kitchen when frying food and cooking on the stove top. Keep a lid nearby. If a pan of food catches fire, slide a lid over it and turn off the burner. Take the fire, remove the pot from the stove. Remember, the stove top and oven are not to be used for storage. Ensure working smoke alarms are installed properly, bed shaker and strobe alarms are available for hearing or visually impaired occupants. Plan your escape from fire based on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear. Ensure windows and doors open easily and practice your escape plan. The alarm sounds, get outside and stay outside. Call 911 from your safe meeting place using a mobile phone. If you're unable to evacuate, shelter in place, stay near a window and call 911. Exercise regularly to build strength and improve coordination and balance. Ask a doctor about appropriate physical exercise. Be aware of your surroundings, including uneven surfaces. Take your time when getting out of a chair or bed. Stand and get your balance before you begin to walk. Keep walking areas, pathways, and stairs well lit and clear of tripping hazards. Wear sturdy, well-fitting footwear and utilize handrails. Review your medications with your doctor. Keep an updated list of medications, medical directives, and emergency contacts posted on your refrigerator. And before I take any questions, I just want to say that if there are questions regarding the Maui Fire, I will not be addressing them at this time. I have no authorization nor do I have all the information needed to represent the department. I will take your name, your number, and I'll gladly refer you to our PIO or have her call you. Any questions at this time?
Okay, so I appreciate you making that presentation. And this is, before we take any questions, I think this is a good time right now, since you just mentioned the Maui Fire, that this is a good opportunity to pay some respects. And it's been requested that the board and the attendees here today take a minute or so to think about the folks who have perished in that fire and the folks that are struggling to find a place to live and try to rebuild. So if you, if I could, in your own way, could you please just take one minute of your own time to reflect and think about things difficult for them and things that perhaps, things that we can maybe do? And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go ahead and just stop for just a second and let you all reflect for a minute. Mahalo, mahalo. There any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department?
Mr. Sakamoto.
Go ahead, Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report on the Fire Department. Mrs. Sakamoto, we just want to ask if our fire hydrants that we have up here in Koneohe is adequate enough for you folks to utilize, or should we need more, or we're just at that great number right now? We have enough?
So I know there is a formula, and there are certain high-hazard areas, and there's a distance where fire hydrants are placed. As far as knowing if they're adequate or not, that's up to, I guess, border water and our department, our prevention department, which oversees regulating how far apart the hydrants are. Thus far, we have not had any kind of problems accessing water for this community as long as I've been here.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? A hearing none. Thank you, Captain. Moving on to the Honolulu Police Department. Is there a-
We got a question. We got a question.
This is Rocky.
Captain Rocky, go ahead, please.
I have a question for the Fire Department. I wanted to know where the mountain rescue was, because we have, we have a problem out in our, in our Moka, illegal people just going over the no trespassing signs and doing illegal hiking. So just wanted to know where they did that rescue. Most likely either Puma, Eli, or the stairs. So I would like to know where your rescue was.
As far as the location of the rescue, I would have to defer and get back to you on that question. I do not have the incident report number with me, and I do not know the exact location of the incident.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question, please?
Thank you.
Captain, excuse me.
Go ahead, Dale.
Bear with us, please. Excuse me, Captain. May I ask a question? My question is this. I know as you go through your procedures, you look for potential hotspots. Is there anything that you could think of in the greater Koneohe area that our community could be aware of that would be most concerning for any type of wildfire or anything of that nature?
As far as the most concerning areas, of course, is high-value areas, inaccessible areas, areas that are a lot browner because of the weather. There's a lot of different elements that go into making that decision.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? And it looks like I have to wait a couple of seconds while folks get their way to the microphone, so I will pause. Spencer, good to go?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the Honolulu Police Department. I see a representative is here on camera. Off you go, sir.
Good evening, Sergeant Wade Nakagawa from Koneohe District Four Night Watch. Unfortunately, I got thrown into this last minute. I do not have any statistics for you. However, per our Captain Alu, we're gonna be trying a different technique for enforcement for the haiku stairs. What's gonna happen is, is we're gonna start enforcing all parking throughout the area. So any, any and all parking violations. We have not started our enforcement yet, because we wanted to notify the public, the residents there, because our enforcement will not be specific. It's gonna be just a blanket enforcement of all parking violations that are, that are found. At this point in time, unfortunately, that's all I got. Sorry, I don't have any stats for you.
Got it. Didn't this happen once before in terms of parking around the area?
Not in the time that I've been here, sir. We haven't specifically targeted parking. We've just targeted the people in the area and possible trespassers and things like that. But per the captain, we're gonna try and target park, illegal parking.
Okay, well, let me, that's good to include a lot of residents if you've been up there.
Right, which is why, which is why we wanted to notify the Neighborhood Board to let their constituents and residents know what's coming down, because we're gonna come in and we're gonna enforce everything.
Okay, we've been down this road before, and the result is gonna be a bunch of angry residents, so-
I understand that. And this is not coming from me, sir. This is coming from the captain.
Yep, and this is just coming back to you from experience, so if you wouldn't mind relaying that-
Yeah, it's been my experience as well, sir. I've been in this district since on and off from 2002, dealing with all of these different things. And, you know, doing a blanket enforcement like this never, in my experience, doesn't normally work, but I'm down on the bottom and he's up on the top.
Okay, got it. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department, other than my comments?
I'd like to come into the mic.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
What kind of parking violations? Driveways, fire hydrants, what?
Everything. Everything that's related to parking violations. Parked within intersections, cul-de-sacs, curbs and corners, fire hydrants, four feet of a driveway. I mean, that, everything.
Is-
It's okay to park in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, it's definitely okay to park in the neighborhood, but there's, there's certain revised ordinances and revised statutes that we have to go by for our enforcement. I'm positive that there's gonna become issues with expired tax and safeties, because we can actually write citation for those if they're parked on a public road.
We appreciate all those illegal parking citations.
The biggest thing that I have to warn the residents about, though, is parking in your own driveway. If you're blocking a sidewalk, we're gonna enforce that.
That's, I think that's where the complaints came from the last time, was people were just doing the same thing they always did, and the new enforcement procedures got them caught up. Okay, appreciate that. Any other questions for the Police Department? I see a hand there.
I feel that this unfairly targets Hokulele subdivision that perhaps Laura con- is that your subdivision? No. They have much shorter, by design, much shorter driveways. And so even if they park in their driveway, it's a violation. That's gonna hit everyone in that neighborhood. These are the people who are worst hit by trespassing.
I understand that, but that's basically where the captain and the administration is going with this enforcement. I'll make a note of it, and I'll send him the, your thoughts on it. But this is not coming from us. This is coming from our command.
Hey, Dale, is it possible you and I can get together and set up a meeting with the captain just to go over the history of what happened in the past?
Yes, Mo, that'd be a great idea. Thank you.
Do you have, can you, can you set it up?
Yes, I will.
All right, thank you. And I see a hand up there?
Mr. Sakamoto.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Chair, Rocky. Sergeant, I just wanted to elaborate about a robbery that happened at the Winter City Shopping Center at Little Caesar's on the twenty-second of July.
Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate anything about what happened, what the suspects were, looked like, or what they did?
Unfortunately, because it's an open criminal investigation, I can't elaborate on it. I can't tell you that I was there. I was the supervisor on scene for that. It kind of fits a bunch of different parameters, but I can't release anything unless Crime Stoppers does it.
Okay, I appreciate what you both can do in the investigation. That's horrible what they had to experience by being robbed.
Yes, sir, it is.
David.
I just wanted to ask a question about the parking. I just wanted to know if you had any kind of guidance on when this would be beginning the enforcement?
Unfortunately, no. In the email that we received from the captain, it does not list a start date for it, but it does say that he want, he did want to notify the residents prior to us conducting any, beginning and conducting any enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that was gonna be our, one of our discussion points. That's, that's good to hear. Thanks. I see a hand up.
Laura?
Me. Okay, so Mo, does this require a pig to discuss this?
To discuss what?
The parking thing that you want Dale to set up?
No, it's just Dale and I are already on a committee for the HPD Committee, so we just go over there and talk to the captain and find out what's going on, find out how he's gonna notify the community, make the, make the, make him aware of the length of the driveways in the, I believe it was the Hokulele subdivision, the real short driveways. If you park your car in there, it's gonna be on the sidewalk, and that's gonna be ticketable.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
A question.
Okay.
Greg, what's up? Is it possible to do like a resident permit system like how they did in Kaluee Valley?
Yeah, yeah, Greg, we did, we, we went through a whole three, four-month process of community meetings for the permitted parking, and the community did not want it, almost, almost unanimously.
Thank you.
Any other questions for HPD?
I have one from the floor coming to you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I know it's hard for you to see who's on the floor, Mo, but this is Rocky again. First of all, I want to thank the Police Department for complying when our residents has been calling for the illegal parking on Kamihameha Highway by the Heia Kea Pier. The parking is up from the Heia State Park, past the Small Board Harbor. Parking is on the sidewalk. People cannot walk on a sidewalk. So I thank you guys for coming down and we've been calling. So you might wanna ask your police, your man to maybe on weekends, so we don't have to call all the time, to just, you know, once in a while, go by there and check it out, because it's both sides of the road. It's illegal parking. The people gotta walk on the road, getting off the bus. Mahalo.
No problem. I live down Kahaloo, so I know that issue. I'll talk to the guys about it.
Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department? Okay, for somebody who just got the job dumped on them, did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Take care. Have a good night.
You too. Next is Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Good evening, everyone. For those who I haven't met yet, I'm Colonel Bevan. I'm the new commanding officer at Marine Corps Base Hawaii. I took command back in May. I've been trying to get around all the Neighborhood Boards as quick as I can. My calendar fills up quickly, so it's taken me until now to get out here. I've gotten to meet some of you, but not all of you, but I want you to put a face to a name and to let you know that as I have opportunity, I will be here at your board meetings. When I'm not here, I will have staff present, in this case, Major Jordan Fox and Ms. Kristi Kalahiva. They do a great job of giving me feedback, not just from here, but other Neighborhood Boards. So usually, within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I get a detailed report on what's going on with the board. So your concerns, your issues, when I am not able to attend, they do get to me fairly quickly. If I could, for just real quick, I know the situation in Maui is on everybody's mind. I want to tell you what your Marine Corps Base Hawaii has been doing to support. As some of you know, there is a process by which the military can support civilian authorities, but there's a process to request our support. It has to be vetted, it has to be approved. We cannot just on our own provide the things that we think they need. It has to go through the appropriate channels. However, we are postured to support. We have done a number of things. So this week, we have transported, transported either with C-130s or with our C-20 aircraft, cruised over to Maui, as well as some equipment that they needed in order to help with recovery operations. Last weekend, I had just gotten back, was still in the aircraft at the airport, had just landed in the center of Kehoe Kalouli, had texted me looking for some manpower at the Capitol to help with donations. We were able to, within a couple hours, get about thirty Marines down there Friday night. I was down there all day Saturday with probably about the same number of Marines. And then again, Sunday, we did a drive over here at Koneohe District Park for donations and things. So we are postured to provide follow-on support. We have some tasking that we think may be coming down, and like you all, our hearts are touched by this, and we are here to support as best we can. Had a meeting today with the members of the other services, Captain Joker with the Coast Guard, Captain McGonigal with Army, and your military on this island is posture and prepared to support, provide that defense support to civilian authorities when we are tasked. So I know it can be a tough situation, and we are all wanting to help as best we can. There are some things that, that limit us, but I'm gonna turn over the rest of the time to Major Fox, unless there's questions for me specifically. Major Fox will brief the rest portion, but I appreciate the opportunity to come here to see me, introduce myself to those you I haven't met, and I look forward to working with you. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Colonel. I need to actually set up a time to come visit with you on MCBH, and I also have another member of the Military Affairs Committee that would join me, if that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. I would love it. I welcome any opportunity to come and chat, and I would love to host you aboard the base. So please, let's get that set up.
Thanks, Colonel. Okay, Major, do your worst.
Good evening, everyone. Aside from what the Colonel already spoke to, we look forward to seeing some of you next week at the Waianae Town Hall on invasive species, focused on the little fire ant, the kukui frog, and the rhinoceros coconut beetle. So the CEO will be there. I'll be there, along with some of our staff members from Environmental, to focus on how we can support and get rid of these invasive species. And any questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? That's all we've got tonight.
Excellent. Any questions for MCBH and the Colonel? Okay, one hand has popped up. Go ahead, Mr. Sakamoto.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Major Colonel, for coming tonight. Major, thank you for responding back to me at the last meeting when my questions concerned the gas lanes at the Marine Corps Base Hawaii, and as well as the accident of 2016 with the two helicopters.
Sir.
It really touched me when I heard of that accident, when I, I used to work the twenty-one years Marine Corps Community Services. I appreciate all the service people there and their families and, and the leaders at Marine Corps Base Hawaii. So kudos for you folks, and I look forward to one day coming to the base again and meeting with you folks. But kudos and hurrah. Semper Fi.
Thanks, sir. Happy to have you.
Any other questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii? Anybody come into the podium? Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we now have the Hawaii Department of Transportation joining us. Is Lena Gano here? Okay. All right, then. We'll move on into our board briefings, and we have a briefing coming. Hey, is Vice Chair here?
Yes, I am.
Good. I will have to, I will have to bow out and get into costume here in about ten, fifteen minutes. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, I'll be on and listening as long as I can, and once I get backstage, when I'm not doing anything, I'll stick my earbuds in to listen in, and if you, you need me for a vote, more than likely, I'll be, I'll be on. But I'd like to go ahead and turn the leadership over to Vice Chair Lamb, and he'll go ahead and move the board briefings and get into resident concerns and elected officials. Thanks very much, and we'll catch you in a little bit. Mahalo.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Next item on the board agenda is board briefings. Do we have Complete Streets here?
Hi, Vice Chair and Chair Radke. Renee SPO here from City and County Honolulu. I'm gonna try to share my PowerPoint. I will warn you, my laptop is, likes to freeze up at least once or twice during this, but I'll try to keep it moving quickly. Great. Can you guys see that? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And you can hear me okay, I assume. All right. Good evening. Thank you for having me on your agenda tonight. I've been meaning to come up to this neighborhood for a bit, so glad to be here, provide an update on Complete Streets in Koneohe, and take questions from the board and the public. I think most of you are pretty familiar with Complete Streets at this point. We've been working in this community and others for, I don't know, I don't know, at least four or five years on this project in particular, and come out overall for over a decade now. For those of you that are maybe still new to the concept, Complete Streets is basically a street design approach that says that we should be designing our streets and public spaces for all people who use those streets, not just for people who drive. Obviously, this looks different in different contexts, but this is a nice generic image we like to show about all the potential that our streets have. The city and county does have a Complete Streets law in Revised Ordinance of Honolulu, Chapter fourteen. And basically, what it says is every time we touch a street, any kind of transportation project, we have to implement Complete Streets improvements that are context-sensitive to that place. There are lots of reasons to do this. I'm not gonna read these, but the number one certainly is to improve safety. A bit on safety, we have been digging into a lot of data on traffic crashes in the last year or so as part of our Vision Zero effort, and we are finding that we actually have about one fatality a week on our island of people getting around. So this is obviously a public safety issue for us, and something we're very motivated to help reverse. And then sadly, of course, pedestrians and kapuna are impacted disproportionately, as well as folks from more low-income neighborhoods. We do fortunately have a lot of tools to help address this problem. I like to boil it down to sort of two basic goals for our streets. One is providing dedicated space for people who are walking, biking, or rolling. Obviously, we can't have safe streets if, you know, people who are most vulnerable are needing to share that space with people in motor vehicles. And then the second is, once we have that space, we also need to limit the opportunities for vehicle speeding, just in case conflicts do happen. We all know we are human. We make mistakes. We have bad days, but obviously, the outcomes are much less severe if the crash happens at a lower speed. I'm sure you guys have seen these graphics before. The relationship to speed and safety is not linear. It is exponential. So if someone gets hit, say, in a crosswalk, and the car is going twenty miles per hour, there is a very strong chance that they will survive. You know, if you double that to forty, those chances drop very precipitously. So this is what we're embodying in our projects. We have a growing body of local data that does help to support this. This shows the crashes, the pedestrian crashes along South King Street. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the protected bikeway we did there around 2014. Interestingly, we saw pedestrian crashes cut in half after putting in the bike lane. So we're starting to learn that these improvements don't just have safety improvements for the particular folks we're gearing them towards. They really do help produce crashes across the board for all users of our roadway. And this is just another set of data, again, from a road diet that we did up in Kaluee Valley, where we reconfigured the roadway, and again, in 2015. And you can see after the project, the crashes went down. And you can see after the project, the crashes went down significantly. So turning to Kani'oe, these are, the corridors in yellow are the ones that we had selected for our Complete Streets planning effort, which took place years ago. These are being implemented in sort of a phased approach. The primary way we typically implement Complete Streets with the city is through our paving projects. It's a very efficient way for us to provide improvements. And so we're kind of slowly coming through the neighborhood, doing the paving, but we have broken this up into different projects. I'm going to breeze through this, because I know many of you are party to this. We have done a lot of public outreach kind of early on in the process, including community meetings and being out in the public, surveys, neighborhood board meetings, et cetera, and tried to engage sort of everybody that we could think of within the community to share their issues, as well as their ideas for how we can improve traffic safety in Kani'oe. A summary of what we heard, really poor sidewalks, or just completely missing in many areas, bus stop areas really lacking amenities, crosswalks not currently safe for people on foot, no safe place to bike. We did hear very strongly that the folks did not want to reduce travel lanes, they wanted to generally maintain vehicle capacity, but hopefully bring down the speeds a bit. So these are the roads that we are currently working on paving project design for, including the Complete Streets elements. So you can see Haiku Road, Keahala Road, Kamehameha, Anoi, and then some smaller neighborhood streets that are just going to be paved without much improvement. Quick summary of the improvements there, we have major sidewalk upgrades planned as part of this project. These improvements are along Kamehameha Highway. We did not originally include Keahala, but we did hear loud and clear through our public engagement process that that was also a priority for the community, and that sidewalk improvements were needed there. And then we also have a small portion on Anoi Road that we're looking at upgrading. Crossing improvements, this is an update I also want to provide to the board. This image on the right shows what we had originally proposed in the Complete Streets plan for the crosswalk at Haia Street, across the street from the elementary school there. Since that time, of course, we are all familiar with the raised crosswalks that State DOT has been putting out, and so we got some follow-up requests to look at a different treatment for this crosswalk, you know, something that matches a little bit to what we're sort of seeing pop up on the state facilities. And so that is something that we are now advancing instead of the original concept. Other improvements, rectangular rapid flashing beacons. I know you guys have been waiting a long time for the Haia upgrade. Unfortunately, that is a separate project from the paving that's on its own trajectory. It should be nearing construction soon. I apologize, it's not out there yet, and I can continue to sort of hound those project folks to make sure that's moving. But we also have another crosswalk that we're upgrading at Kapalai Road, kind of more towards the like-like end of Kamehameha. Bike lanes, we do have bike lanes coming into Haiku Road. What we're doing there is basically removing the peak hour parking restriction and making it two lanes all the time, instead of transitioning to, you know, two lanes in each direction during certain hours. And as a result, we do have some leftover space to mark bike lanes on Haiku Road. We are also marking bike lanes, and in some places, we have width for actually protected bike lanes on Kamehameha through the commercial core. We are not removing lanes for this, we're basically just using the existing road space and kind of taking everything down, squeezing it a little bit, which hopefully we expect will also help with some of the vehicle speeds on the corridor. As far as project status and next steps, we are in design, we are nearing final design here. We did just get cost estimates for the project, and I will say, the sidewalk improvements are expectedly going to be quite expensive, so we actually are considering now phasing the project. Our Department of Design and Construction had suggested deferring Kamehameha Highway and going forward with the other roads first. I said, I think the community is going to be very upset about that, given the quality of pavement on Kamehameha, so we might actually move that one forward first, given that we only have so much funds within one fiscal year. We are hoping to submit the construction plan through the approval and permitting process in the next couple months, and we anticipate to bid out the project early next year and hopefully start construction next year as well. So that's it for my update. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Renee. Are there any questions from the board members? One from Laura.
So I understand that the driveway to a business is owned by that, by the business or the owner leasing it, and so if we go ahead and repave, put in sidewalks, but that owner doesn't choose to go ahead and repair his driveway, then it's, I mean, it's not good. So how are you going to deal with that? Are you going to require them to repair the driveway as we get these sidewalks put in? And please, can we not put trees in the middle of the sidewalks? Thank you.
Driveways, yeah, driveways are typically private property, kuleana, but they are on public property generally. So we are going to be rebuilding some of the driveways, particularly those that are very broken up. I think it's near time. Supermarket, for example, their driveway is just looking really, really beat up, and it's kind of silly for us to do sidewalk improvements on both sides and ignore that. So we are considering the condition, and we will do the work ourselves. We are not going to rely on private property owners to do any part of this to make it whole. We're going to do everything that we need to make it whole. Yes, of course, there's improvements they can do to make it better, but if you have any particular areas you want us to look at and make sure those are included in our plans, please let us know. Trees, we do not have a lot of trees planned as part of this project, unfortunately. If people see opportunities for additional trees, please let us know. You know, we don't have a ton of good experience putting trees into our small kind of old tree wells with, you know, compacted dirt. We did identify some locations for new trees along Haiku Road, but it turned out, it's actually not within our right of way. So that's something I've approached Kamehameha Schools on, maybe something they could do in their frontage. So I apologize, there are not a lot of tree improvements as part of this effort.
Okay, we got a hand up for Mr. Sakamoto.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Hi, Renee, Donald Sakamoto. I also sit on the Waho Metropolitan Planning Organizations was Vision Zero Action Test Force. My question for Kani'oe is, the last time you were here, you were talking about moving bus stops. Has that been suggested where they want to put them, as well as the paving? Are we going to get better paving this time so we can pave the road and we don't have to pave it every 10 years? And concerning the red cams with Vision Zero, are we going to have red cams in place for speeding at certain intersections, because it's very dangerous? That's my question. Thank you.
Bus stops, we are moving a couple of them to be particularly closer to improved crosswalks. We have some that are kind of mid-block, and we don't want to encourage people to cross. But if you have, but we are retaining some where they are now, contrary to what was in the earlier plans. So we've made adjustments to those plans, and it's a little bit of a mixed bag. I think we're only moving a couple of them. So if you have a particular one of interest, Donald, please let us know. I'm happy to pull that up and share with you the details and see if, you know, there's any concerns with that. Red cameras are, right now, in a pilot phase, and are only authorized, I think, within kind of urban Honolulu. And so we will not have that as part of this project, but if that's something that you support, you want in your community, I suggest, you know, letting our state representative know, let HDOT know. I'm also a Windward resident, I would love to see more of those installations over on the Windward side. And then finally, paving, we are going to have some nice new paving out there, and this is a roadway rehabilitation project. This is not a simple mill and fill, kind of, you know, top layer. They're going to go down pretty far, get it in good shape, and hopefully it'll last us for at least, you know, a decade, decade and a half or so. But if you want more details on the paving, let me know. I'm going to have to check in with some of my paving engineers. But this is a, this is a major paving project that is honestly long overdue.
Thank you, Renee, for everything you do and details also. Thank you.
Same to you, Donald. Thank you for always participating.
Yeah, do we have any questions from the audience? I do see Janice, and then Anthony Rocky.
Okay, on Kam Highway South between Ko'ola Family Dynasty and Kapalai Road, there appear to be tree roots uprooting pavement. Is that going to be addressed?
Yes. Let me make a particular note at Kapalai, just so we can check the plans. But yes, that is, typically when we do these roadway rehabilitation projects, the first thing that you'll see is not the paving, the first thing you'll see is concrete work. And we're doing a lot of sidewalk improvements, so that may go on for a while, but typically that concrete work is fixing broken curbs, broken curb ramps, addressing tree roots, stuff like that. So certainly, but like I said, if there's a specific spot, you know, you want us to look at, but I can certainly look at that Kapalai, make sure our project engineer is aware of that one. So yep, please bring those to our attention if there are any that are critical.
Do you have a question over there?
I am very concerned about the intersection, Lilipuna and Kam Highway, especially the crosswalk. And that crosswalk is adjacent to a medical center. I would be, I fear for the safety of our kapuna, and I'm sure that my esteemed colleague, Mr. Sakamoto, could not make it across that crosswalk as it exists today. So is there any plan, or is that in the plan, to deal with that intersection?
What is the particular concern? Is it the length of the crosswalk, or the time given, or are the markings faded, or what's the...
It's completely, it's completely broken up, and multiple layers, potholes, there is no crosswalk markings. It is impassable in a wheelchair, it is impassable to a walker. I submit to you that Mr. Sakamoto could not make it across the crosswalk. Very simple. So my concern is, it's a liability, a safety issue and a liability. It's worse than any part of Kam Highway, really. So I think someone ought to take a look at it.
Yes, we're going, oh, go ahead, if it's related.
It would be between Aloha Gas and Castle Medical Building is the intersection in question.
But yes, the entire road is going to be, all the pavement will be nice and new, all the markings will be fresh, and up to date. So if it's just the condition of the road, we are absolutely going to take care of that. There are, you know, some bike facilities in that area, which will also, I think, help shorten the crossing a bit and the amount of exposure that pedestrians have out there, right? Kind of shortening the area that vehicles have basically to circulate and, I'm sure, cut off pedestrians trying to cross. So yes, there should be multiple benefits there. I will also note, you know, we've got some new audible devices out there to help our visually impaired members as well.
I think we have one more question from Anthony Rocky over here.
Aloha Mai, I wanted to bring up the concern of our community, we've been bringing it up in the Kahaluku Neighborhood Board, but evidently it's in the jurisdiction of the Kani'oe Neighborhood Board. The Kamehameha Highway, city highway, between the Haia State Park and the Haia Bridge, the Makai side of the road is already, it's eroded. You can see the pole is leaning over, but on a rainy night, it's very deceiving. I saw twice, you know, in the recent years, cars went over. We've been asking for a guardrail there for years. If you're going to be doing paving, let's look for the safety of the people. On rainy nights, it's very deceiving. Mahalo.
Yes, we actually, so we're not paving that portion quite as soon as the kind of, you know, core, commercial core of Kani'oe, but we actually were just talking about that guardrail recently in one of our internal meetings. So I know that the city is aware of it, but I can follow up. Maybe I'll put it on my next interdepartmental meeting agenda and just make sure somebody's taking care of it. So we are aware, but like I said, we have so much stuff, you know, if you're not squeaking wheels, sometimes things kind of fall to the wayside, so I'll try to make sure someone's looking at that.
It's been six years now we've been waiting. Mahalo.
Okay, I'll take one more. From Lina.
Yeah, hi, Renee, thank you for the presentation. I have three concerns I wanted to raise, and I apologize if this is something you covered I came in later, but I represent this area, Waikalua area, and I've had multiple community members come up to me with concerns about the striping on Kamehameha Highway. It's really faded, and at night, you can't see it, in the rain, you can't see it, in the sun, you can't see it, and so I think it's a hazard, and I'm hoping that that's included as part of the projects that you folks have coming up, but I think that's an important one to prioritize. The second question or concern is the crosswalk by St. Mark Lutheran School and Ho'ene Place, and I know this has been a topic that we've discussed in previous Neighborhood Board sessions. I'm not super clear what was ultimately decided. Last I heard, you know, folks were going to come out and see that folks actually are utilizing that crosswalk, and I can confirm, I drop my kids off there every day for school, and I see families utilizing the crosswalk to get to school in the afternoon, and I see kids using it. You know, there's medical centers across the way, there's a retirement home, I believe, on the other side, so I just want to get an update on whether that crosswalk is going to be preserved, because I know there was discussions to remove it. And the third concern, I'm not sure if it's part of your kuleana, but it's the stoplight timing out here, is that something that is being addressed through your program, or is that something separate?
We are adjusting the signal at Haiku and Kamehameha.
Okay. So this one is the one right out here in this intersection by the Fire Station Police Department. So in the mornings, during like drop-off time for Ben Parker, there's a lot of traffic coming in this way, in by, I mean, from Kamehameha Highway back towards Waikalua, with folks dropping off their kids, or coming back from dropping off their kids. And so to get out onto Kam Highway, it's a left turn, but you have to yield to the folks coming straight, and so it backs up sometimes all the way past Green Haven. So I'm hoping that, you know, during that rush hour, school drop-off time, it could be adjusted to give folks a little bit longer to turn, or ideally even a left arrow turn signal, so we don't have to yield. I think that would clear up traffic for everybody in the morning in this area. But yeah, that's been a problem for a really, really long time, so I'm hoping somebody can look into it.
Okay. I will be aware of that. I'll share that with our traffic engineer, I'll have him look at that. Striping visibility, we'll have brand-new striping out there. However, I will note, when I travel to the continent, their striping is extremely reflective. I mean, you drive at night, and it's like pow, you can see all the lines, so much more than even, you know, a relatively newly paved street here. So we actually have been talking to some product representatives, like at 3M, about improving the materials that we use in our striping to maintain that reflectivity longer. So that's something we're just generally looking at across the island, especially, you know, when it's raining and it's dark, you basically can't see lines at all. So we're sort of aware of that limitation, and we are looking to address that, get better kind of island-wide, improve our specs, but maybe we can, maybe Kani'oe might be one of our pilot projects or something for that. Ho'ene crosswalk is probably my least favorite topic to discuss. We have not seen enough volume using that crosswalk to even get... to even get close to meeting our uncontrolled crosswalk guidelines. We have recently updated those guidelines and they have continued to confirm that you need, you need more people using a crosswalk frequently for drivers to get used to seeing people there, expecting people there and stop. So if there is a time that we should go out that you think has the most chance of having the most people, please let us know. We can go out there, we can look at it again. But we've looked at it a few times and we've seen one, maybe two people crossing. And it honestly just, it, it's, so one, one part is the number of people. The second is, as I said, we have to upgrade the Kapalai Crossing with a flashing beacon. We would have to do the same at Ho'ene to keep it. But we really just are not seeing enough volume out there to justify the investment. So currently we are proposing to remove that. If that is something that is of grave concern to the Neighborhood Board, you know, maybe a formal action or something might kind of help us kind of change course on that. And like I said, if there's a time when you know there's going to be a lot of people out there, let us know, we can go out, do a count then. But right now we are proposing to remove it and instead have people cross. We prefer they cross at Pua Inea at the signal or down at Kapalai where we're going to improve the crossing with a flashing beacon.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I just want to add one thing on that.
Can I cut that, I'm sorry. We do have a lot more members who want to have questions, but we need to move on. I advise the other board members, if you have a question, because I have questions myself. I, I would like to go on more on this. But I asked that board member, or Renee, if you could leave your contact information and board members if you can put your questions in writing and have it added to the minutes so it's part of the record so that we can continue to track any of these questions that we have. But thank you, Renee. Thank you for your effort to push this forward. As you can tell, there's a lot of issues with our streets right now that need immediate attention. But as, as much as you can push forward the complete streets implementation, Kaniohi, we appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, I apologize for your members, a lot of questions, but we got to move on for other agenda items. Next on the agenda item is Hiko grid modification. Do you have a presenter here?
Yeah, hi there. My name's Nathan Tadaro, and I'm here presenting on our grid modernization effort.
We're used to stay for 10 minutes here, but we're used to stay for 10 minutes, but we'll go over questions as, we're used to stay for 10 minutes on this, but we'll go ahead and take some questions that are as needed. Thanks.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Yeah, so I wanted to come here today and share some updates on our grid modernization Phase One advanced metering infrastructure effort as well as bring awareness to this community about one of the network pieces of equipment that we plan to install in your neighborhood. So grid modernization is all about, as the name suggests, modernizing our electric grid. And the reason why we want to do that is, you know, we are using electricity in ways that 10, 15, 20 years ago, no one could have really imagined. You know, we are integrating a lot of distributed energy resources in solar photovoltaic panels, battery storage, electric vehicles, the electric, electrification of home appliances and things like that, right? So we are using electricity in a lot of different ways. And in order to support that growth, we need to modernize our electric grid. And so the first step in that is actually modernizing the electric meter. And so what we are currently in the process of doing is deploying smart meters to every home and business in, in our service territory. So about 470,000 customers, unless you don't want one, and then you can opt out, right? So these meters, some of the benefits are you won't have to worry about having a meter reader come by and have to do a manual meter read at your house. So if your meter used to be behind a gate or something and you had to unlock the gate or move some things around your house to create access to the meter reader, you know, that inconvenience will be eliminated. You're going to be able to see your electricity usage pretty much from the prior day, but broken down into 15 minute increments. And so you'll be able to see, oh wow, you know, I use my electricity more during this time of the day instead of this other time. Or you could kind of get a sense of, well, you know, I, I was charging my vehicle. I was running some appliances and I saw a spike, right? And so you can, it just really brings a lot of transparency to when you are using your electricity. As we integrate the data from our smart meters into some of our other systems, we're going to be able to see outages in real time. And so, you know, I know for many years, you've had to call your electric utility and report an outage. And so, you know, soon you won't have to do that. We will know and we will be able to start sending our troublemen to go ahead and troubleshoot the situation. So those are just some of the benefits of smart meters. There are many other benefits. In order for the smart meters though to work, they need to have a communications network to be able to communicate the data back to our systems. And so how that works is we install the meters. They communicate using a radio frequency mesh network where the meter, where the data essentially kind of hops from meter to meter. And then it gets to a network gateway. And so all the data goes to the network gateways. And then from there, we use cellular to communicate that data back to our systems. And then that data is used for billing, for outage management, for looking at potential voltage issues and things like that, right? So that's really how the communications network works. And so one of the things that we need to install, or I guess, before I jump to that, we have two pieces of network equipment. And one is a network gateway. So that is what brings the meter data back to our systems. The other is a network router. And so the router kind of just acts as like strengthening the RF mesh network in areas where maybe that signal was starting to get weak because the meters were far away from the gateway. And for a size comparison, you can see here that the network gateway and the network router are both roughly the size of a MacBook Pro. Now, what it looks like and why we're here is we are working with the city and county of Honolulu to install a network gateway on a street light in Kaniohi. And so I know many of you probably already have smart meters because we have deployed a lot of the smart meters in Kaniohi. But there is some, some areas of Kaniohi we haven't been able to get to yet is because we don't have that network gateway yet to bring the meter data back. And so what we want to do is, this is kind of, this is a map of a street light in a neighborhood. And so you can kind of see the cross streets here. And it's kind of at the end of the cul-de-sac. And so we are working with the city and county of Honolulu, like I mentioned. We submitted an application with engineering designs and loading and submitted all this information to the city and county. They're reviewing it. And then once we get a decision, which is hopefully an approval, then we would work to install the gateway. We don't quite have a definitive schedule because, again, we're waiting on where from the city and county of Honolulu. However, you know, we would be looking at potentially really late August or maybe sometime in September, depending on when we get a decision. In terms of how long installation takes, it really only takes about an hour, maybe two hours max, but usually about an hour. And we would provide traffic control to make sure that the area is safe and traffic is able to flow. So with that, that's really the conclusion of my prepared remarks for the presentation. We do have here our contact information. So, you know, if, I'm happy to take some questions right now. But if any of you have questions later on, feel free to email us, community@whineelectric.com.
Okay, are there any questions from the board members? Got a question from Mr. Downing. Go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering if Hiko has given any consideration to putting their utilities underground like they've done in the middle parts of the island?
Wait, I'm sorry. Are you talking about power lines or are you talking about the smart meters in the communications network I'm talking about?
Well, I'm talking about the, the power lines in the neighborhoods. I mean, you, you drive into Mililani area and, and everything's underground. Why, why, why can't Hiko do that over here in Kaniohi?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't work in the planning department, so I'm not really the right person to be able to answer that question. I'm focused on the advanced meter deployment. But if you want, you could send a question to the community@whineelectric email. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board members? If not, we have a question from the audience here.
Hi, I've been reading a lot of comments on the neighborhood, you know, the blogs that everyone has for each of the neighborhoods. And when we have power walls and the smart meters get installed, power walls go down. So do you have any comments on that? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for raising that question. So, you know, I will say that when the smart meter is installed, there is a short outage, right? Your solar panels, your batteries, so in this case, a power wall is a, is a specific brand or, well, I guess it's the Tesla brand or Tesla model or the battery. So all those devices have inverters and they are designed to, after there's a momentary outage, to kind of reset. And so what, what we have noticed is there are rare occasions where the inverter does not reset on its own automatically as it should. And so in those casers, the homeowner would have to reset the battery or the solar PV inverter. And so that is something that we've, we've been made aware of. We've reached out to the Hawaii Solar Association and we are working with them actually to acquire instructions from all the different DER providers in the state to obtain those reset instructions. So that way, you know, we could provide that to customers if they don't have those instructions already. The DER provider should be providing that. You can call them directly as well. But, you know, that's what we've, what we have noticed in a few instances.
Any other questions?
Hi, Nathan, so am I understanding this right? That we as a homeowner, we do have a choice of whether to?
Yes.
Put in the?
Absolutely.
So is?
Yeah.
Are you guys?
You absolutely have the choice.
We call you and say, don't come, yes, no?
Oh, okay. So we actually have a three touchpoint notification. So 60 days and further, minimum 60 days, we send out our first communication. So it'll either be via email or mail. It depends on, you know, whether you've got an email address with Whine Electric or not. And so you'll receive that communication and it'll say, hey, you know, we are going to be installing smart meters in your neighborhood more than 60 days from now. These are the benefits, why we think, you know, you, you will benefit from having a smart meter. We recognize though that not everybody wants one for whatever their concerns are. So you have the option of opting out and we provide all the various opt out ways. Then 30 days out, we also do another communication. It'll also be either via email or mail, depending on your, your preferences that you have with the company already. And then about a week, week and a half out, we'll do another notification. And we'll say, hey, you know, we are, we have scheduled you for a smart meter. It's going to be about this week. You know, we'll give you about a week's window. And then on the day of, we actually do one more courtesy. We actually have our installer, they will knock on your door or they will try and, and attempt to call you to see if they can perform the meter exchange at that point. And that's really in case you might be, you know, I recognize a lot of people work from home and stuff. And so if you're on a busy, busy call or something and you can't afford to have a momentary outage, you know, we'll, we'll say, hey, that's okay. We understand, we'll reschedule and come back, right? But at that point, when you are on the phone or, or in person with the installer on the day of your install, if you decide at that point you don't want a smart meter, we understand you can opt out right then and, and we will mark that down and skip.
Okay, I see Jeff raised hand and Donald, and I'll reserve one more spot for myself. So Donald, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Concerned by legally blind people like myself. I had notices come in the mail, but I couldn't read it and nobody could read it to me. So when the meter person came, all of a sudden he knocked on my gate or my door. I said, what is this? He said, we've been sending you notices, but I'm, I'm blind. So I didn't know what was going on. He went in and he changed the meter. And then I found after the fact, I, I could have not do it, but, you know, it's, it's hard for persons like myself who are blind and can't read advertisements coming in.
You know, thank you for that feedback. I will certainly pass that on to our digital communications team. You know, if, if you don't want the meter, you know, you can request, you, you still have an option of calling our call center and, and letting them know. We are not putting electromechanical meters on, on premises anymore. However, you can get a non-smart meter. It'll be a digital meter, but it will have no wireless communication capability. So, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that, you know, we weren't able to provide you with the communication that you were able to, to receive and, or digest. And so, yeah, I mean, you are, you are welcome to call our call center if, if you choose to opt out still.
Okay, Jeff online, go ahead.
So I have a two-part question. First part is during emergencies, does the smart meter have the capability of turning off the grid tie for distributed energy resources?
The smart meter turning off the, the inverter on your?
No, just the grid.
On your solar PV.
Just cut off, you know, your connection to the grid?
Yeah, yeah. That's a good question. I will have to take that down.
Because once?
Jeff, can you go ahead with your second question so that Mr. Tadaro can answer both at the same time? Jeff, you're still muted.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Second part of that question, let's see. For the smart meter capability, so you answered the, you didn't know if the distributed energy is able to shut it off so that it doesn't feed to the grid and, and say like a fire or a hurricane? Um, what would be the advantage for the, the grid upgrades in those situations hypothetically theoretically? Right, because I know a lot of- Right? Because I know a lot of stuff.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if, yeah. Could, um, I'm trying to see if I understand the question. You're asking about if there was an emergency, are you able to, assuming you have a battery?
So there's some, there's some customers with, say, ventilators at their property, right? And some of the smart capability was to discern between customers that needed vital equipment to be on versus the rest of the neighborhood where it's like, okay, well, we can power you down because it's safe to do so, right? So that was one of, I think, the benefits that I had heard about the smart meters. Is that grounded in truth or is it just kind of, at this point, too early in the game to assess that?
Yeah, I mean, we can do a remote connect and disconnect for power using the smart meter, right? So that's like another benefit, you know, if, you know, when people are doing movement and move out. But in terms of, I think, if I understand what you're asking, it's around like medical baseline customers and, you know, remotely turning on and turning off their power. And no, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess I was gonna, I'll do one follow-up with Mr. Downing's. I understand his request about our existing power lines. I think they're still good, but we are on the windward side. We do get a lot of wind over here and, you know, at some point we need to upgrade, will you be considering putting it underground? Or, you know, what's the future plans for your, for these poles? I guess you can take that back to your?
Yep.
To your company. And then my question was, you know, when in the Army, when we got a more sophisticated equipment, it means more maintenance and more problems, right? So we put this communications network in, what happens when the communication network goes down? How does that affect service? Electrical service?
Yeah, so, so the communications network and the smart meters are separate from the power lines. So it will not affect service in terms of power. And then in terms of the data, even if the communications network goes down, the meters are designed to hold twenty-four days' worth of your billing data. And so it'll stay locally on the meter and then once you get the communications network back on, all that data will get pushed through the communications network and back to our systems. So we are able to, you know, we obviously have spare network equipment and all it takes is send the rolling truck out and taking an hour to swap the equipment.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Terraro. Appreciate your briefing to us. At this point, we're going to move on.
Thank you.
My apologies, we're coming late. I forgot we start at six-thirty and I think we wanted to start at six-thirty so we can end early. So we do have about forty minutes left or, you know, forty-five minutes left for our meeting. And the next portion is resident concerns. Are there any resident concerns right now? Okay, I have two raised hands on the board. Mr. George Schmelzer, I see, and doesn't look like Mr. George Schmelzer, but I see you on screen. Let's go with Polly first and then Donald and then our audience member.
Thank you. The latest plan for hike stairs removal has a $4.28 million price tag. That was made public in the site plan permit submitted by the OCCL. Is $4.28 million a good use of taxpayer money for our town? Given that removal won't stop hikers from trespassing in the valley nor from hiking the Kotala Range?
Thank you for raising that concern. Is there a city official here to address that or any other member want to address that? Okay, we'll make that note as part of the record for that question. And that is the audience question there. Okay, Donald?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Donald Sakamoto's question is concerned, I think it's all island tolling company charging $900 for a toll if it's more than fifteen minutes. It's ridiculous. Would like to know if we can get an update on that. And then in the Silverbeat article, there was an article about feral pigs and where I live, I got a lot of feral pigs and it's getting out of hand. They don't run away when I, I go woof, woof. And they're not afraid of humans, so they're just coming down from the mountain looking for food or whatever they can get. So that's a big problem. That's my concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Donald. Online, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm not George Schmelzer. It's my husband's computer and I don't know how to change the name, but I'm Judith Inazu, representing the Mid-Pacific Roadrunners Club. And I'm here to inform the board about a race we have on the O'Pali Trail on O'Pali Road on Saturday morning, September ninth. I put all the information in chat. It will, the road, the race will be all on the roads. That's keyed off from the traffic. So the street traffic won't be affected. But if you have any questions or concerns, I'm here to answer them. Thank you.
Any comments? Go ahead, Mr. Donald.
Yes, Sakamoto, concerned the walk or whatever. How is the conditions there? Because I used to, I lived in that area, so how is that area for walking and isn't really maintained?
Yeah, we work with the Department of Facilities Management, City and County Facilities Management. And what they do is they go in and clear up the course for us. And we get the key so we can unlock the chain, you know, and so we just go into that O'Pali Road. And they do clean up the trees, the branches, the shrubs. So they maintain that course for us just before the race. So it's in good condition for us. Thank you.
All right, if that's it for resident concerns, we will go on to elected officials. We have slated two minutes each as questions progress. Our first elected official is on the agenda. We'll go, we are going with Representative Jill Takuta in the Governor Green's office. We have representatives online. If not, are there any questions that members of the board or residents would like to place in the record for the governor's office, the representative's office? Oh, Mr. Sakamoto, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Sakamoto, I have two things for Representative Takuta. The first is identity theft. There's people being hacked, not only individuals, but agencies. And I want to know what Congress is going to do about that. Second is in the Department of Justice in 2010, they celebrated the twenty-year anniversary of the ADA law. There was Title II and Title III of the ADA law that was worked out with new guidelines. Unfortunately, Title III of the ADA law or Guidelines for Businesses to Comply with Screen Advertisement Websites such as restaurants as well as advertisements like Long's to be accessible for persons who are blind to use their screen readers. Would like to know what Congresswoman Takuta can do on her end in rectifying this problem with the DOJ to make it compliance with all the states to have accessibility. And for Governor Green, I brought this subject up about the Department Health. They had a breach on their records or the debt records a few months ago, it was in the newspaper. I did get some confirmation that it's still under investigation, but would like an update what has happened since then on the debt records being hacked and what solutions are being made to prevent it from happening again. Thank you.
Go ahead.
For Representative Takuta, I would like information on, for one, the digital currency that we've heard is coming. And when can we expect that? Is just more information about that, how that's going to impact us? And also for missile deterrence and protection here in our state from any kinds of attacks. Thank you.
Right, thank you. I do have one more for the record. It's for the governor's office. I was made aware of a complaint from, that initiated with the state-level official who made representation about the neighborhood board that I do not think is accurate or reflective of what the board does and has done. I'll just leave it at that and make it as part of the record and follow up with the governor's office with that. Thank you. Okay, well, moving on then, if there's no representatives, let's go on with our city officials. Mayor Blanjari's representatives and council member, who I believe is on online. Go ahead, Mr. Kawano.
Oh, thank you. Just want to call out a few things in my two minutes. The mayor has his August 2023 newsletter posted. I'm not going to go over the highlights in detail. You can go to the newsletter. I'll post the link in the chat. Just want to share one thing that, you know, this neighborhood has a lot of questions on stream bed clearing. So I want to let you know that our new Director of Facilities Maintenance was sworn into his office and his name is Gene Albano. And he's an accomplished electrical engineer who would take over, has taken over the office of Director of Facilities Management and brings with him a lot of experience in the engineering field. Probably most important for me would be a quick update on some deadlines for real property taxes that are coming up. Just a friendly reminder that on Monday, August 21st, the first installment of real property taxes are due. And if you decide to do a mail-in, I want to let everybody know that the postmark date has to be August 21st. With regard to filing a claim for homeowner's exemption, your claim for a homeowner's exemption needs to be filed by October 2nd. September 30th falls in the weekend, so October 2nd is the deadline. And just wanted to remind you on that, such that if you qualify for homeowner's exemption, you should do the filing. And then lastly, with regard to real property taxes, as we updated last time, the credit for the low-income tax credit with the, that includes an increase eligible income amount of $80,000 went from $60,000 to $80,000 for homeowners that are on title. Your combined gross income on your federal tax return cannot exceed $80,000. Please be aware that you can, you can call in and, you know, ask for guidance with the Treasury Department or Division of Budget and Fiscal Services Office. And they'll be happy to assist you. I'll put the phone number on the chat box as well. This credit will allow you to limit your taxes at three percent of your eligible combined income for all title holders on the homeowners with the homeowner's exemption. And the application for filing can be pulled either online or picked up at the tax office. And the application is due on October 2nd, 2023. So what essentially happens is that your taxes will be limited to three percent of your combined eligible income. If your property tax bill exceeds three percent of your eligible income, your credit will be the difference between your property tax bill and the eligible income and not less than the minimum tax of $300. And again, if you have questions, I will post a number so that you can call the Treasury Division of Budget and Fiscal Services to ask questions. And the due date again for the real property tax credit, low-income tax credit, is October 2nd, 2023. There were specific questions with regard to the city last time, one of which is the Nissan, was the Nissan SUV height. They were smaller vans purchased. There was a concern raised regarding the ramp to get into the vehicles. And the response we got from the DTS team was that the Handy Van program placed ten Nissan SUVs into service in mid-July. These vehicles will be used to serve riders who do not require an accessible vehicle. The Handy Van will also be adding fourteen mid-size accessible vehicles over the next year to serve riders who need accessibility features. The stormwater utility fee was questioned last meeting. When will the stormwater utility fee be implemented? The requests, there was a request to give Oahu residents an abundance of forewarning before implementation. DFM has received the requests and they are in discussion of the timeline. And their stormwater utility team will be posting a plan via OneView at a future date. So there's no set date for the rollout of the utility fee. And as I mentioned last time, there will be discussion with the public, adequate forewarning before the fee initiates. And we will provide more information as that comes up. Finally, there was a question about old mattresses. The comment was many landfills refuse to collect old mattresses. Is the bulk pick up the recommended method? E and V or E and V Division responded mattresses are delivered to the city's waste-to-energy facility. Each power utilizes fuel to generate electricity. Residents may dispose of mattresses by using the city's bulky item collection appointment system by scheduling through the city's opala.org website. On the same website, there's information about the city and county of Honolulu's nine, public refuse drop-off locations, three transportations and six convenient centers for residents to dispose of household refuse, including old mattresses. I'll stop there for questions after Vice Chair Kiana speaks.
Thank you, Mr. Kawano. Yeah, before we take any questions, we'll go to Councilmember Kiana.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Director Kawano, for your update. I just wanted to supplement your comment with regard to the mattresses. I know Auntie Rocky specifically asked about a transfer station and whether they still accept it mattresses for disposal. So the Department of Environmental Services said that they are from residences, but the, any mattresses from businesses are prohibited and it wouldn't matter the amount. So I don't know who will be dropping off mattresses along the roadside. If it is, if they're individuals from residences, there's no excuse for them to be doing that. They are accepted at the transfer stations. Donald Sakamoto had mentioned two issues and I was pleased that Rene Espinal from Complete Streets was here tonight. The other issue, of course, was related to the coconut rhinoceros beetle. And as the gentleman from Marine Corps Base Hawaii mentioned on Monday, and Jaren McCartney of my office will be putting in the chat box a flyer relating to a Windward Community Meeting on Invasive Species that will be happening at 6:00 to 7:30 PM on Monday, August 21st, at Waimea Menalo Elementary and Intermediate School. All of the electives who are going to be in town, including our state? All of the electeds who are going to be in town, including our state lawmakers, as well as Joe Takuta, will be there. I highly recommend for anyone who cares about invasive species to be there. We will have the Chair of the Waianaeal Neighborhood Board, the Chair of the Department of Agriculture, the Chair of the Department of Land and Natural Resources, and Laura Thielen, not only for Parks and Recreation for the city, but also for the mayor. We will also have specialists available to give the community an update on the little fire ants, coconut rhinoceros beetle, as well as the koki frog with a question period for Q and A. I have invited Olelo. While it won't be filmed live, we'll be able to show it later. So I just wanted to let you know about that. I know Senator Kioh Kalole will update you on a meeting that would occur in Kanihohe and we will be working with Representative Martin. I know she is considering one for Kailua as well. If you look at a map just for the little fire ants, you will be alarmed because all of the infestations are on the Windward side. And if efforts aren't made to help to address some of these issues, which largely stem from plants in Waianaeal and soil as it relates to the coconut rhinoceros beetle, I think it's not helpful for all of us. The other flyer I'm going to put in the chat box relates to a community update that I will be providing on the city dog park near Bayview Golf Course. It's going to be Wednesday, September 6th at 6:00 PM at Bayview Golf Course. I will also have Parks and Recreation Department of Standard Construction with us, as well as members of the Windward Dog Park. As many of you know, the park is pretty much finished. The two outstanding items remain a legal easement access that the city is the survey should be completed by September and will be working on next steps. Other outstanding item is that we need to realign a hole which could only be using private funding. So the Windward Dog Park, Jaren, if you could put the link. I would ask anyone who wants to help in Haukua. It's going to cost at least $60,000 to realign that hole and and the purpose, of course, is so errant golf balls cannot go in to the to the the dog park. And we'll be able to give everybody an update there. And I'm also committed to Bayview. They're dealing with a lot of trespassing issues by a lot of folks who are using the guys that they're going to the fish pond and they're causing a lot of trouble on the golf course. So I committed to Bayview since they are working in partnership with us that I wanted to help in galvanizing the community to also Haukua Bayview Golf Course. And that's my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. I think we have a question from Ms. Sakamoto and Mr. Downing. Go ahead, Mr.
Okay, Donald Sakamoto, thank you, Andy, and thank you, Esther, for your reports. Andy, question, you know, I'm a lease, I have a lease with my landlord month to month and I pay property tax. Can I get anything from the agreement with the $350,000, some subsidy of it? And also the recent issue with the Board of Education not having bus drivers for the students. How is the program with the BTS with OTS to get the passes for the students to use city's buses for their services to go to school and back and forth? And Esther, concerned in Bill 2023, City One Parking. Can you elaborate what that bill is all about and may it may help the people in Haiku for having their cars not being told away?
Okay, Director Kewano, did you want to go first with your answers or do you want me to start?
You can start. I wrote down my questions, so.
Okay. Mr. Sakamoto, you are referring specifically to, I'm assuming, Bill 2023 relating to residential park zones? That was that that Councilmember Dos Santos Tam has introduced and is moving? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I think that's the one.
Okay, so let me, and I heard the gentleman earlier who had asked about this with regard to the pilot project in Kalihii. So Kalihii right now is the only neighborhood on Oahu who has this residential parking zone permit. And so what is being sought in Bill 20 is that they're trying to make it permanent as opposed to a pilot project and extend it to the rest of Oahu. And give the authority to determine what neighborhoods to the Director of the Department of Transportation Services. I, like many, do have concerns because I don't believe that it's you can create a one size fits all approach. But of course, various neighborhoods, given their unique circumstances, would be eligible to apply. So we are continuing to work on that to address some of the concerns. For example, one concern I has had, as well as Chair Waters, is that we didn't want to deprive everyone to you just can't have the thought was to just have parking permits for the people who live there. Well, in certain areas like shoreline access or areas where people have to go to a grocery store or go to the pharmacy, there are certain neighborhoods where people should be allowed to park. And so we're trying to strike that fine balance. What I would recommend is that you monitor that. I and Jaren of my office will get you the latest version of the bill. I do believe that it may be agendized. I haven't seen all of the agendas yet. And if it is for next week, we will let you know because I have concerns over the bill. And so I have crafted an amendment and I believe Chair Waters says as well.
Yes, sir. I just want to let you know, Sakamoto, it is on the transportation agenda for the 22nd. I have gotten the agenda. But I look forward to being there and hearing your comments as well.
And if you have a specific concerns, please testify. And I will share with you what my amendments are. So I do believe that it would be helpful for administrative authority to exist. My concern is that it is very, very difficult for anyone, including the Director of DTS, to magically apply the same standards for all neighborhoods on Oahu. It is virtually impossible. And so I think what is going to happen is if a certain area RPG is so complicated, they are going to still require council approval. And I think the whole idea was to avoid council approval. And I just believe that that's a very difficult feat for anybody.
Thank you. Let's go to Mr. Downing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Cecil Downing from the board. My question is to Andy. I apologize, Andy, for addressing you by your first name, but I can't remember your last name. And I'm not even sure exactly who this question should go to, but considering he was directing quite a bit of information regarding property taxes. I'm wondering if there's any possibility that those residents who take in refugees from the war torn country of Ukraine could get any kind of favorable tax treatment?
Okay, so, Mr. Downing, this is Andy Kewano. I'll answer your question first. I know for a fact that we don't have a provision right now to provide tax relief for people that take in refugees. What you can do is call in your requests to the Real Property Assessment Division. They will know that. And please also call, call in to Vice Chair Kiana's office as well. And, you know, we can we can have some, you know, discussion on that with the public. But yeah, right now, we don't have any such relief with regard to the situation you specified.
If you don't mind, can I add to that? Because there's a federal nexus here, it would actually be a federal issue because it would be the federal government allowing for refugees to come into the country. And so there might be a program, maybe not tax related, but compensation wise for people to be able to get funds for helping because you're helping the United States. And so I don't know if the state or county could help in remedying a immigration related matter in the taking in of refugees from abroad.
Well, thank you for the answer. Just for information, I have a family of four refugees from Ukraine living with me now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Downing. Ms. Bryant?
Yeah, aloha, Councilmember Kiana. Thank you for being here tonight. I was hoping you could address the resident concern that was shared earlier about the ballooning cost of the removal of the Haiku stairs. I know originally it was, I believe, about $1 million cost. It's ballooned to over $4 million and you've been a big advocate in getting funding to have the stairs removed. So I'm wondering if, you know, that has changed at all with the the new cost projections and you know, whether that's still a responsible use of county taxpayer dollars, especially given everything going around across Hawaii Paeina right now.
Thank you for the question. And as many of you know, there's actually a ongoing discussion happening right now on PBS on Haiku stairs. I was actually trying to watch it simultaneously. To my knowledge, I don't know if it's at $4 million, but it's you're correct. We did start out at $1 million and that was actually a marker that was initially proposed by the Board of Water Supply. And the cost is, quite frankly, all related to the increased cost of fuel. And so let me just give you a status first on the contract. I understand that the city has awarded the contract and the Department of Design and Construction works with the vendor. And of course, the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services is helping in the administration of that contract. I don't believe the notice of proceed has has been completed. That is still in discussions. And there are a lot, they are a long ways away from getting the necessary permits to move forward with actual removal. I don't know if to have such a deep discussion on this, this is ample time to have that discussion. But I have to tell you that I don't I don't regret my position on making a decision on for the removal, separate from the cost. I mean, it depends how you value it. $250,000, as we heard earlier, is miniscule for what is needed. So I mean, what are the costs? And again, I think we could have a different dialogue on this and both yourself and I heard Holly's question earlier, the two of you, if you'd like, you can come to have a discussion with me. Because cost is not just a factor, right? For me, my concern was that in order to implement this, I found in my due diligence that not a single land agreement had been secured or was in the process of finalization. I had been asked by a friend of Haiku stairs, a supporter from Kailua. Given my background on land management and knowing all of the players, what can I help them? And I had, I made an assessment and I said that I probably couldn't guarantee a result within 10 years. And after the 10 years, I couldn't guarantee that I would be able to secure all the necessary legal agreements to make this happen. So again, I don't think this is a sufficient amount of time. If you and Holly would like to come to my office, I'd be willing to have a discussion with you.
Thank you, Councilmember, and I appreciate all of the due diligence you've done. I guess this was just more a concern about, you know, utilizing taxpayer dollars in the most efficient and effective way. But happy to continue the conversation with you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a member of the audience who'd like to raise concerns. Go ahead, Mr. Sir.
Hi, I'm Keith Okamura. I live in the Windward Estates Townhouses on the corner of Kaikili and Haiku Road. There's this guy that's running an illegal van rental. He has 16 vans. He parks them on the road, takes all the parking stalls. I reached out to the mayor's office. They sent out police officers out there. And he still continues to do it. I'd like to know what you guys can do about it because sometimes when we come home, we end up parking all the way up to Hollyva Joe's because of this guy taking all the stalls. We had run ins with him. It's going to get crazy pretty soon because a lot of people are getting really angry about this guy. And they approach him and he gets cocky with everybody. So before it escalates to some kind of physical, we need to do something about this guy. And I have the van license plate number here and I also have his address. So maybe you guys can reach out.
Sir, thank you so much. And Andy, let me just give you an update on Senator Kioh Kalole. If he's on, he would also give you an update because in collaboration with him, we actually went with HPD. HPD has done stakeouts. They have been finding them, but you're right, we don't have a full grapple on it because they're doing everything possible to use loopholes to circumvent the law. And so, Andy, it's quite serious. So I might need your help. So sir, I don't have an answer. I do want to let you know, we all know who he is. He's actually harassing people who report him in his own building complex.
Right. But I have the information here if you want it.
So Andy, I'll give you an update.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Kiana. Can we have that information sent to the mayor's office and we'll follow up? You know, a fax would be great. And then I have a couple of questions for Mr. Sakamoto yet that we have to cover. Mr. Sakamoto, on the first one, with regard to the one time $350 credit that goes to landlords with homeowner exemptions, the question about whether some of it can go to the renter. In this, in that case, right now, if I have the facts right, the renter would have to work with their homeowner landlord to, you know, make effect, you know, such of a pass through. Because we don't, we don't have jurisdiction over, you know, the lease agreement. It's between landlord and tenant. I also want to let you know that with regard to this fiscal year, there were adjustments made for residential A residences. So if if the property is in excess of $1 million, the tiering for residential A parcels were reduced for more of the moderately priced homes. So the assessed values that are taxable up to $1 million. The tax rate got reduced from $4.50 per thousand to $4 per thousand. And for the assessed valuation above $1 million, $1 million and above, the assessed valuation rate that's applied to get to the tax increased from $10.50 per thousand to $11.40 per thousand. We kept these changes revenue neutral to the city, but what it what it does in effect is also provide another reduction of owner real property tax costs up to $1 million. So essentially, there's a there's a tax benefit of addition of an additional $500 to the homeowner, you know, based on the tax change with regard to residential A. So just want to let you know about that as well. But yeah, the renter has to work with the homeowner landlord for the pass through of those benefits. With regard to the second question, I know that our Director of Transportation Services, Roger Morton, is was working with OTS and the DOE to provide a updated group contract plan for students. I'm not sure if that's in effect. But I can check with him and get you an update on whether or not the agreement was executed at the next meeting. Or if you want to reach out to him directly, Mr. Sakamoto, you know Roger Morton. You can shoot him a quick, you can call him or shoot him a message and he will get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Quano and Councilmember Kiaiina. We'll move on to our legislative officials. First on is Senator Jarrett K. Okoloe. Is, is he on or a representative forum? If not, um, next Representative Lisa Kitagawa. Yeah, I understand Representative Marayoshi is on PBS Insights at this time, but is there a representative from his office? Okay, if not, then Representative Natalia Hussey-Burdick, where's yours?
Aloha, everybody. One moment while I just share my screen. First, I actually just wanted to thank, I think it was Cecil from the board who mentioned undergrounding the, um, electricity lines. I also strongly support that. I think that's a really big disaster preparedness move that we eventually need to take. So I'll be looking into that for Kailua Kanioe and let you know if I have any updates on that. I want to congratulate our new Agribusiness Development Corporation Executive Director. She's actually a Kanioe resident. Her name is Wendy Gady. You might remember one of the reasons why I voted against the budget this year was because in addition to underfunding education and all the things we didn't fund, we found room for $120 million. We give pretty much $120 million every year towards the Agribusiness Development Corporation, which has been the subject of a scathing audit that basically said they're not doing their duty to diversify our agriculture and help us get to a food sustainability place. So I'm really hoping and excited for Wendy Gady. I think she's going to turn the ship in a new direction, and I'm really excited for what the Agribusiness Development Corporation is going to be able to do under her leadership. Um, I want to thank, um, Councilmember Esther Kiaiina and Senator Jarrett K. Okoloe for really taking the lead on the invasive species management issues that we've been having in Winwardahu, especially the little fire ant detections. I just wanted to share this map with you. If you haven't seen it yet, it shows most of the sites for little fire ants are on Winwardahu in Kanioe and Kailua and Waimeaalo. There, and let me zoom in on that a little bit. So this is the, mostly the Kanioe region. There's a huge spot in Kanioe. They're extremely problematic. They're going to change our way of life. They eat animals' eyes out. They prevent kids from climbing on trees. It's a really awful pest that we want to eradicate as soon as we possibly can. So we just did a site visit with the Hawaii Ant Lab. They mentioned that one of the biggest problems they're having is getting access to people's homes where they think there might be an infestation. They basically knock on the door and they say, you know, we're with the Hawaii Ant Lab. We would like to, uh, take care of this problem for you. They basically go in every four to six weeks and apply this very species-specific pesticide. But some homeowners are just declining their services, which is their right to do, but is also really problematic when we're trying to fight these invasive species. So if they do come knocking on your door, please let them in. We're available if you have any questions. If you have questions about whether or not you have little fire ant at your house, or if you want to reach out to them for their services, visit stoptheant.org. And this is, as Councilmember Kiaiina mentioned, there's a meeting on invasive species prevention August 21st from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Waimeaalo Elementary and Intermediate School. Um, moving on to the next thing, HPD is hiring. They have been for a while. There, a lot of their officers are retiring this year, and they just don't have the same level of recruitment that they used to. The salary is $5,745 a month, and, um, this is really kind of the biggest obstacle in terms of preventing us from getting enforcement with speeding, um, the Haiku stairs, just anything you can think of where you like need police officers there. Most likely, they can't do it because they're so severely understaffed right now. So join honolulupd.org if you know anybody who's interested. And that's pretty much all I've been up to besides the Majority Policy Committee, which we meet regularly and we talk about our priorities for the next year. We're probably, I'm hoping we're going to do some things to implement fire prevention in light of the Maui wildfires, but things like undergrounding our power lines and fire prevention. I'll keep you updated on the results of this as we go along. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. We had a question from Mr. Sakamoto.
Uh, thank you, Representative, for your report. Since my, uh, Marayoshi is not here, uh, my question for you is with the Board of Education, recent bus shortage for students, the school bus, uh, really disturbed on this situation. They should have been more prepared. Can you get a report, what's, uh, update on that later? And then also air condition? Does most of our schools on the Winward side have air condition for students so they can concentrate and work in a well, comfortable environment? That's all.
That's a really good question. Is, is there anybody else? Am I the only rep online?
I believe you are.
Okay, so as far as the schools go, the, um, the city is actually providing hollow cards for all of the students. So they basically do like I did and just take the public transportation to school. As far as AC goes, that's a really good question. I'm going to have to check on that. I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any more questions for the representative? Not, thank you, Representative Hussey-Burdick. We'll move on to community organizations. Winward Community College online. If not, um, next item on the agenda is board business. Oh, okay. All right. Go ahead. We have another community organization coming on to speak.
Okay, my name is Janice Lyon with the Kanioe Christmas Parade, and one of the requirements to have the parade is approval from the Kanioe Neighborhood Board. So I come before you telling you that we are planning to have our next parade on Saturday, December 2nd. It's always the first Saturday in December, but I also need to get Kanioe Neighborhood Board approval, and it has to be written in the minutes before the permit office will allow that to go through.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. The request is for approval of the board to, um, provide support for the approval of the, approval of the, uh, to reserve the streets for the Kanioe Christmas Parade. Okay. Do I have a motion to?
I move that we approve the Kanioe Christmas Parade on the date mentioned.
A second.
Spencer?
Yeah, I believe it's supposed to be on the agenda for this meeting. I guess I didn't see it written on here. Can we, can we vote on it? Spencer?
Does it not have to be on the agenda, Mo, as a question here? Does it not have to be on the agenda first?
No, she just, she just.
Um, Spencer, I guess could we motion to, I guess there's a motion to commit and then take it to a special meeting of the board online?
No, we can't do that. It, it needs to be.
Can we amend the agenda?
Uh, we, yes, we definitely can. We have to have, uh, what is it, 75% of the board members to approve something at the meeting? And this is something of great, great community concern, so. Do we have enough, Spencer?
Okay, um, Spencer is saying he, we do not have members, enough members present to amend the agenda, but I think we can, we can motion to commit and then at least make a, put something on the record of our support for, or, or discussion, or we can have discussion and then take those discussions or comments of, of support for that. So is there?
I, I'd like to make a motion that we add to the minutes that the Kanioe Neighborhood Board has, is committing in, uh, committing to the Kanioe Christmas Parade on the date mentioned.
Second.
Okay, motions made for, and seconded. Any objection? If not, any discussion?
Call the question.
If I could acquire a discussion, express my support for the Kanioe Christmas Parade, if any other member would like to do that, make that part of the record. They can do that too, thanks. Okay, um, I guess I heard a call to question.
That was me.
So, uh, this call a question and I guess call the question is to finish debate, so any objections to call the question? If not, then, uh, we'll move to the vote. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Here to the chair, the ayes have it, and it's unanimous. Motion has been approved. Okay, um, let's move on to item number eight, board business, approval of regular minutes. I believe the minutes has been presented to the board members.
Vice Chair, there's a number of comments that need to be addressed in reference to subcommittees, et cetera. So for example, on HPD liaison, there should have been the names of Dale Carsonson, Mo Radke, and, uh, Mr. Sakamoto. And then there was one also for transportation.
Yes, Sakamoto was on transportation with yourself, Vice Chair, and Holly Savio.
So noted.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the minutes with the amendments as set for the assignments of committees?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any objection? No objection, then minutes are approved. All right, we'll go on to.
As amended, correct?
As, as amended.
Question, Chair. Concerned the minutes from my minutes, well, is that different? We just go up with the original minutes.
I believe the presentation of the minutes was as, was presented with corrections by Mr. Johnson. Is that, that's correct, right? Okay, so what was presented for the board has been, there's been a second, um, there's been revisions that need to be presented to the board. And if we want to approve those revisions, we need, we should approve with the amendments of the assignment of committees on there. Is there said motion?
Sakamoto motions.
I'm, I'm sorry, what's the motion?
The motion is the, the action, the approval of the minutes was, um, the original one that was, well, the first one we approved was the ones that were, uh, was passed out, but then Mr. Sakamoto had recommendations to revisions to the minute that were emailed out after the, the first sets were emailed out. So the motion was to approve the minutes that were, had Mr. Sakamoto's revisions on it with the addition or with the amendments of the committee assignments as we previously discussed.
Are we talking about the July minutes?
Yes.
And has Mr. Sakamoto mentioned what his changes are to these July minutes?
Mr. Sakamoto, go ahead.
Because we have, I don't, I don't believe we voted on the July minutes except for those, those, uh, committee assignments. So if Mr. Sakamoto wants to, to move to amend those minutes with these, with his recommendations, we should probably do that. Mr. Sakamoto, did you have amendments to the July minutes?
Yeah, I had just some, uh, things that I had questions and the answers from the representatives as well as, uh, um, things I said at the end, you know, about the.
Would you, would you, if you want those minutes to be amended, then could you tell us what those changes are?
Uh, Chair, can I have Dale Carsonson read the amendments for me?
Yeah, of course.
Change it, sure.
And devil, please correct me if I mistake anything. I am referring back to the email that was sent out with his amendments. One of them was an update on the information to be found on the newsletter link on oneohahu.org. The next was on updates of information can be found at HTTPFS honolulu.gov website, BFS Treasury, followed by an update on applications can be found at the corrected link. The meeting permitted, uh, interaction group reels property tax. There is a link that he has amended and put in place there. And then under Mr. Sakamoto asking the following questions as it pertains to what action is the city or state going to do about PFAS? He highlighted that. Also, what efforts are being made to select a new landfill location? Question mark not answered. Why is the city DTS procuring tin? Uh, which was addressed by Representative, excuse me, by Mr. Quano this evening. How is the city going to raise the monies for the salary increases for the mayor, directors, et cetera? I don't know if that was completely answered, uh, but that was the question highlighted. And then the governor's emergency order on housing was highlighted with a new link. And that's everything that I could read.
All right, uh, yes, that's the update I had from my minutes. Spencer, that's the exact one I gave, gave to you.
Any discussions from the board members? Is there a motion to approve revisions with amendments to committee assignments?
I move that we accept amendments.
Motion hasn't been made and seconded, any objections? No objections. The minutes are approved as revised with amendments to the committee assignments. Hey, let's go to board committee reports and assignments. Are there any attended meeting reports?
Vice Chair, uh, this is outside the realm of the actual committee reports, but I would like to report attending the Board of Water Supply review this past Monday. And the presentation was done on the Board of Water Supply seeking comments on proposed water rate hikes that would take place in 2023 through, excuse me, 2024 through 2028. Uh, Spencer has put a link into the chat, which is a overview on the presentation that was done. The website is boardofwatersupply.com forward slash proposed rates. And this is for the public information. There's also a 12-minute video that highlights the presentation. I believe Chair Radke has requested a short presentation by the Board of Water Supply at our next meeting, if possible, uh, to review the presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carsonson. Any other attended meetings?
Quick update on the permitted interaction group for trespassing in Haiku. The canvassing work is continuing with a team of neighbors who have visited 198 houses so far, including 21% of Hokulele subdivision. And, um, as with previous findings, a majority support managed access, 55.38%. And the percentage in support of removal is at 13.85%. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Severiary. Ms. Bright?
Yeah, I can give a brief update for the Kenuhebe Regional Council. There's no update on any actions the council has taken, but the August meeting was postponed to September 14th. That'll be on Zoom and also in person at the Ko'ala Poco Hawaiian Civic Club office. So just wanted to give that update on the, the new date.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Chair.
Mr. Sakamoto.
Yeah, with the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, their next meeting will be September 6th. And then Vice Chair is basically also the vice chair of that committee. So look forward to having him there as well as others from the neighborhood board, other agencies too. To, to look at the policies for our, our city in Kauai and the state in the different aspects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sakamoto. I'll also be chairing that meeting. So if you have any questions or issues, please feel free to contact me about it. Any other committee reports? If not, we are done with our board committee reports and assignments. Next item on the agenda is announcements. First item is, next regular board meeting is Thursday, it's September 21st at 6:30 PM. Benjamin Parker here and will also be available online. Mr. Sakamoto, you have an announcement?
Yeah, also Chair, I think Spencer, you said the Olelo broadcast would be on channel 49. I don't know about the other ones, but is it 6 o'clock in the evening? Yeah. And also announcement that next week is the City Council Transportation Committee meeting. It'll be from 3 o'clock in the afternoon. It'll be hybrid. I sent an email out to the board members about the year 2023 City One Parking, as well as the handy van briefing that they're going to have about handy van from the Department of Transportation Services. So I will be attending that meeting. I hope you folks can watch on Olelo or tune in. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. We're about 12 minutes over, so, but that's better than 9 o'clock. So is there a motion or adjournment?
No motions.
Is there no motion to second? Dr. Severiary, second. Any objection? If not, we are adjourned at 8:43.